We're all so happy that you're here tonight. My name is Amy Likeover. I'm the president of the Federation of San Rafael Neighborhoods and we're going to be starting a slideshow in just a minute. But we wanted to make sure that you all had a chance to wave and say hello across the miles. And understand how grateful we are that you are becoming informed voters by attending our forum. This is a very special event because as you know, it's co-sponsored with the Coalition, Point San Pedro Road Coalition. And we're always so happy to work together. At this point in time, I'm going to ask everybody to mute themselves. And Jim, do you want to start up the slideshow? Thank you. So here we are together. I have to ask you, because I haven't checked the mailbox today, did you receive your ballots? Do a thumbs up if you did. Yes? Oh, that's great news. So just, just hold on with the ballots until you have had a chance to listen to our candidates express themselves. On what matters to them about the school, the school district and also about the city council. We're so excited that ballot drop has happened just about at the same time as our forum. As you can tell, this is recorded. We wanted to make sure that you felt welcome. And remember that all of your questions are going to be submitted via chat, not spoken. So Point San Pedro Road Coalition is here as are the Federation. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Thank you. I've identified myself, Bonnie, you want to just wave? Bonnie Marmar, co-chairs the Coalition with Denise Lucy. And she's here to represent their board. We also have from our board, as I'm going to scroll through. Jim Draper is our webmaster and he's our Zoom manager for tonight. We're very, very grateful. Thanks, Jim. We also have Kevin Hagerty, who is on our board and also is on Bonnie's board. I think I just got Kate Powers arrive. She's on our board, Greg Brockbank, why don't you wave? Let me just sort of scroll through and see if there's anyone else who is on our board, whose names that I, and pictures I can see. I don't, oh, Eli is here too now. Great, Eli. Anyway, we'd like to remind you to please mute yourselves. We're very happy to see your smiling faces. So please don't feel you have to turn off your video. But if, if there's any background noise while candidates are speaking, we will mute you. So in fact, I'm going to ask Jim to mute all, I can mute all, go ahead and mute. And then candidates, when it's time for you to speak, please unmute yourselves. Next slide, please. All right, we've asked that you not only have your name in underneath your picture, but also your neighborhood. So while I don't have Amy Likeover Gerstal Park, that's where my husband Joe and I live. And while Bonnie Marmar doesn't have that she lives in Point San Pedro Road, that is her organization. So if you would be so kind as to click on your Zoom window's right corner, hover your cursor over the three little dots there. Click on rename and type your name plus the neighborhood that you are here. I'm not saying you represent the neighborhood, but just so we get a sense and so that our candidates get a sense as to where you hearken to. And then you just click return and that should be next to your name. So thank you so much and it would be great if you could put your last name too. Next slide, please. And then about submitting questions now, Bonnie has so many questions. It's really extraordinary how many people have submitted questions in advance. But we also would like to hear from you folks about, if you have a question that strikes your, strikes your mind as you're listening to the candidates, please feel free to enter that into the chat window. I'm going to oversee the chat window and Bonnie has questions that were submitted in advance. And if you're uncomfortable using any of the, the technology, just chat, right? You see that icon at the bottom of your screen? It's a little picture of a bubble, just chat and go ahead and say, I need help. And then one of us will do our best to help you so that everybody is. Again, I'm going to ask people to rename yourself to include your first name and your last name, if possible, and also your neighborhood. So I see Barbara Kraus, if you could do that, and Leo, if you could do that, put your, put your neighborhood in San Rafael, that would be awesome. Diane, Eli, Fay, even the candidates, put your neighborhoods, since this is a neighborhood meeting. Jan, same with you, Joaquin, thanks Joy. And then Kay, I'm not sure who you are, it'd be great if you could identify yourself. Lawrence, Leo, Lori, just your neighborhood. Mary Beth, Michael, Paula, I see it happening, Steve, Susan, Victoria and Donna. If you could include your neighborhood, we'd be really happy about that. And then there's someone who has just a phone number, it'd be great if you could put your name in there. Okay, next slide, please. I'd like to just, if you're unfamiliar with the Federation, to tell you a little bit about the Federation. Our purpose is to facilitate communication and interaction among the neighborhoods in San Rafael is represented by their associations, groups and individuals, and to promote effective and regular communication with local government entities and agencies. If you want to click on the website, Jim, go ahead. So this is our homepage, as you can see, we have, we record all of our meetings, it's just a wealth of information. You want to click on our membership. You'll see here how affordable it is to belong to the Federation as an individual. As a household, we have a special deal and then annual dues, it's kind of a sliding scale for your group. You don't have to be a bona fide neighborhood association, but you can be like a block to join us, join, join our group. And I think just their strength in numbers, thank you. Next slide, please. Why don't you go ahead and close that picture up? Close, close the page up. I'll admit. All right. Anyway, can you close, Jim, can you close up our website and go back to the slideshow?
I'm trying to do that, thanks.
Good. Alrighty, Bonnie, do you have the mission of your organization in front of you?
Yeah, I can talk a little bit about the mission of the Point San Pedro Road Coalition. Hopefully we'll have a chance for everybody to see our website. Again, my name is Bonnie Marmar, I'm co-president of the Coalition. And our organization is a nonprofit. And I'm hoping that Jim can get back to our, our, that slide so we can show you the actual website. But our mission is to work with the neighborhood groups and individuals. We represent the folks along the Point San Pedro Road corridor. We work with the city and the county on issues relating to education, disaster preparedness, and we, protection of our wetlands and restoration of our wetlands. You can find a plethora of information about our organization, including about La Cumbre Marina, events that are coming up. We have a YouTube channel in which we post some of our educational programs. And you know, for the past 20 years, we've been doing candidates forums. So we've tried to keep our neighborhoods to be informed electorates. And so we have a whole range of activities that we engage in. Our organization was a little different than the Federation, there's no membership fee. You can sign up to be on our email list and you can learn a lot about the history of our area, get information about disaster preparedness and a whole lot of other information from our website. So I encourage you to peruse it.
Thank you. And we will have this slideshow up, I think, right after this, Jim, I'll post it on our website as well. Next slide, please. So our candidates tonight are San Rafael City School Board candidates and also the San Rafael City Council. Next slide, please. All right, tonight's format is that each candidate is going to have four minutes to talk about their background, their qualifications, their priorities and their goals. And then we'll have Q and A and then we'll have closing statements of two minutes. And again, submit questions by chat only, and I don't see any questions yet, but please feel free to do that. Next slide. All right, we're going to start with the opening statements, with, starting with Carolina Martine, who is currently serving on the school board. Talk a little bit about her background, her qualifications, her priorities and her goals. Carolina?
Right, thank you, Amy, thank you, Bonnie, thank you everyone for having me. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. Hello, everyone, my name is Carolina Martine. And I was appointed to the board in February of this year and I've been honored to be on the board since then. I'm a proud mom of third grade daughters that are in our San Rafael City Public Schools. And I was a previous school teacher and a proud product of K through 12 public schools. I came to this country at the age of two from my beloved Mexico City. And thanks to those lived experiences, I am bilingual and bicultural. I came to San Rafael roughly from San Francisco 12 years ago. And from the beginning of my time in San Rafael, I have been an active volunteer using my bilingual skills and serving the community in any way that I can, also coaching not only my children but other students. I fully believe in the power of a public education, which is why my undergraduate degree is in education and my master's is also in educational leadership and administration. I have spent my life committed and focused on educational advocacy, economic mobility, youth, and working with organizations that are fighting poverty. I believe that my background as a public school teacher, a public school mom, a lifelong public education advocate, will serve me well in my role to serve on behalf of San Rafael students, working families and teachers. I'm also supported by the Marin Democratic Party, my peers on the trustee board, also teachers and many other organizations. And during my time on this board, I will focus on the learning loss that has happened. I mean, I'm firsthand experience of teaching during the pandemic. Also teaching and, I mean, recruiting our teachers, hiring them, retaining them, and also really thinking about our graduation rate and what's happening in the past two years. And of course, keeping our teachers and our students and our families safe in their schools. And thank you again so much for having me this evening.
Thank you, let's return to our slideshow, Jim.
Sure.
All right, thank you, Carolina, we're going to go with Faberette now. Go ahead, Fay, you unmute yourself.
Thank you very much for inviting me to participate in this discussion and hello to all my neighbors. I'm a favorite San Rafael City Schools trustee for candidates. A little background about me, I came to Marin County about 40 years ago. And my family, my daughter, my friend and I settled in the Dominican area and became parents and participants in the Pullman School community. There I was Girl Scout leader of seven girls, bilingual, Spanish, English and English Hispanics. It was a great mix of kids. To the board and the community, I bring a set of skills spanning over four decades in business. I have a breadth of experience in food and finance, budgeting, building operations, human resources and training, information technology and much more. So my business experience is important to me and to the community as a volunteer. I bring it to the table for the consideration of the voters because it is diverse from the rest of the board. And we know that diversity of experience and diversity of thought lead to better outcomes. Now let me speak about my top three priorities, academic achievement, safety and engagement. For academic achievement, the issue is that our kids need to perform up to grade level in math, reading and writing, and they don't today. And we struggled with that before the shutdown. I think we can do better. And that is my number one priority that I will focus on when I'm on the scoreboard. Next is safety. Safety is of the utmost importance because children cannot learn if they don't feel safe. And in the news in the past two months, we've had two safety issues that I'm focusing on. First of all, news because of how dangerous that poison is and child sex trafficking. We know that Marin County was the hub of human trafficking in the Bay Area. Now my third issue is community engagement and parent inclusion in our public schools. Again, that is the notion that all of us need to be involved. There ever was a time when community engagement was necessary and critical. We learned that in the past two years when parents were engaged in teaching their children. So these are three issues that I will focus on as a school board trustee. Now I'd like to use the remaining time I have in this section to, to make a call to action, a call for this community's engagement in our schools by volunteering for a group, a team, that we will form to target this issue that our kids need to perform at grade level, math, reading and writing. Email me on my website and say you want to be on this team. The three W's, waret, the number four, schoolboard.com. We will meet, get our best ideas together and decide what our next steps need to be. We are all community volunteers on this call. Neighborhood Federation members, city council candidates, school board candidates and our neighbors. I have listed myself on the ballot with that title, community volunteer. And I am focused on this for my service as school board trustee number four.
Thank you so much, Fay, fabulous. Thank you both of you for District Four. If we go back to the, uh, thank you to the slideshow. Now we're going to go to District Two, Lucia is here. And she's running unopposed, but we still would like to hear her, go ahead Lucia.
Thank you so much, Amy. First of all, thank you so much for inviting me here today and being among many neighbors that some of you, I have not had the pleasure to meet. So it's really, it's really great to be here. So my name is Lucia Martel Dow and as Amy mentioned, I am running for San Rafael City Schools for Area Two. The reason why I'm running is because, first of all, I'm a mom and a community advocate. And I have witnessed firsthand the many challenges that the families are facing today, either within the school system or around mental health and many issues attending, serving our families today. I am also running because that I have a deep belief in public education as a critical, critical institution of our democracy. And I would like to continue serving as a public servant to all of my neighbors in the community in San Rafael. I was appointed in January 2021, among other reasons, to ensure the optimal, optimal outcomes for many students that were really challenged during the pandemic. I currently serve as the board's vice president and I have been tackling equitable academic access and success, mental health issues, teacher retention and infrastructure improvements to our schools. These are many of the priorities that I work not only myself as a trustee, but also with my colleagues. I, I asked for your support today to continue working again as a public servant, as a volunteer, to continue tackling this many challenges. I'm a proud resident of San Rafael. I have been living in Marinville for about seven years now, where I'm living with my husband and my nine-year-old daughter who attends Mary Solera. Currently, I work as a director of a national collaborative. I committed to increasing the number of people who become US citizens in the United States and bolstering civic engagement around the country. Previously, I worked as an attorney and as a director of immigration and social services at Canal Alliance. And in San Rafael, many of you know that organization, where I built very strong relationships with local communities and leaders. I also serve as a commissioner for First Five Marin, which is Family and Children's Commission, and also witnessed firsthand many challenges that our families have to, have to get through in ages zero to five. I hold a master's degree in law from UC Hastings College of the Law. I have years of experience overseeing progress and budgets and advocating for policies at the local and national level. In summary, I have worked as an attorney and advocate advancing many social and economic justice issues. And I believe my diverse perspective and professional experience to fight for education opportunities for children in San Rafael will become handy at the trustee, at the board level. We're obviously still recovering from the many devastating impacts of the pandemic and on public education and we need a strong leadership in public office. So I'm also very proud to work with my colleagues and the staff and administrators because we need a strong board who's able to really tackle many of the challenges. Please know that there are many forces right now across the country that are trying to divert the attention of some of our school boards. And right now, we really want to keep focused on the student's outcome, academic success and put students first because that is the role of our trustees. I am hoping that also the people that are here today as neighbors really join forces with me today, not just because we are running for office, because we really care about the future of our children. Every day, our children and many families in San Rafael struggle with poverty, housing and food insecurity. And our ability to serve them does not depend exclusively on school boards, but also dependent in every single one of you to advocating for the right policies in front of our elected officials. I have the support of the Marin Independent Journal, Marin Democratic Party, the San Rafael Teachers Association, San Rafael Federation Teachers and Marin Firefighters. And I also have the support of my colleagues at the board. Just to clarify very quickly, I am, Ronnie actually do have an opponent that she bowed out, but she's still on the ballot. So please, please make sure that you also share that with your neighbors because it is very important that you actually do fill the right name in that ballot. Thank you very much and I look forward to hearing your questions.
Thank you. All right, Jim, do you want to go back to the slideshow? And before we go on, do you want to go back one slide? I just would like to remind people that we've just heard, nope. We've just heard from Carolina Martine from Faberette and from Lucia Martel Dow. And Lucia wanted to point out that although she does not have an opponent, the opponent's name is still on the ballot. So this is really FYI. Thank you, Jim, next slide, please. We're going to move on to our school, excuse me, our San Rafael City Council candidates, starting with District Three. And ask that they each speak four minutes also about their priorities, their background, their goals.
Amy, could we get the Q and A done for the, for the other candidates first? I think we need to get that done before 6:30.
Totally, thank you for calling me out on that. Yeah, why didn't we have a slide about that?
I think it's time to start the Q and A. And so I haven't seen questions in the chat as yet. So we have a whole slew of questions that were submitted in advance. And so I'd like to, to kick it off with the following question. And let's, let's start with, let's, let's start with Alicia on this. What additional measures would you recommend the school board adopt to end racial bias and discriminatory disciplinary measures against students of color?
Yeah, thank you very much for that question. This is something I care deeply about. So I, right now, I think one of the, the most important thing is to really understand what the, the data, the data is, the data is telling us right now about some of this proportionate impact in disciplinary measures and suspension and disciplinary actions against children of color, students of color. Of course, the San Rafael School Board, the San Rafael Student Community, it's about 60% Latino or almost 60% Latino. So we really have to be very mindful and understanding what our school community looks like and really understand how our teachers look like and how our disciplinary policies are. Some of the things as board, we have really pushed for administration, myself included, to really embed into our systems restorative justice practices that really take into account some of these dynamics that are happening in our schools and they are happening in our schools. We have part, we have also engaged in administration and teacher training. And we are actually starting teacher training this year to really understand some of those biases and understand some of the diversity in our schools so that we understand if we really are imposing discipline that are disproportionately affecting children of color and students of color. And this is.
Thank you Lucia. We have, we have so many questions and so little time, so we're asking that, that candidates limit their answers to one minute. Carolina, your turn.
Yes. Do we have a timer? Sorry about this. Do we have a timer?
She went like this, you're just gonna look at her, she went like this with her hands.
But also.
Lucia, it's old school, it's old school.
No, no.
Oh, there you are, okay, good, I have 57 seconds, I'm gonna go. I just didn't see that, thank you, the bubble's small and I have big glasses. Okay, so thank you, this is something I'm very passionate about as an immigrant to this country and someone that definitely experienced this firsthand. I think we definitely need to look at the data and really understand when are we starting to do intervention with our students? Because we don't want to be doing intervention when it's too late, right? When are we looking at those data points and how are we doing restorative justice? How are we communicating with the parents? Because sometimes the parents are the last ones to know. And so I really believe in this teacher training program that we're doing. Microaggressions and biases are real things, they are real things. They, today, they happen to me every day. So it's really critical that as we are a school, a system, a community, we really think about the lens we bring to the table and how are we really thinking about students first? So we need to work with the data, do the training and understand how are we showing up in making our schools safe for all of our students? Thank you very much.
And Fay?
Yes, I think one of the things that has been identified in this realm of the students that we have wellness centers now, we were able to fund with the COVID and Fair's Act money, counselors in every school and, and have them be available to the students. And each school, I think, has a wellness center or will have fairly soon. And the objective of that is that students will have a place to, I would say, decompress. Because some of the aggression is, is because they have been, you know, a lot of mental stress during our, our shutdowns. The other thing that has been identified there and our purpose is to identify the issue for the student very early on so that they are given some assistance and, and the administration and the counselors are recognizing before the situation gets critical that there is any, that action is taking.
That's time.
Thank you.
Hey, our next question, Carolina. What? What do you see as the most important tools to use in our schools to prevent teen suicides?
Oh boy. So I think that, you know, we have this discussion of like the need for counselors and how hard it is to find counselors and also the critical need for mental health. And, and we have mental health centers in our high schools. We also, you know, thinking about Davidson, but I also think that needs to start in our K through five schools. I know that on school site council at Glenwood, I'm very proud that I raised my hand during school site council to extend the time that we had for our school counselor. She was only, I think, part-time and we've like pushed that to make sure that she's there full-time. Because I don't think, I think it starts so early on. And I think right now, really monitoring our social media, our technology and having these conversations as early as, you know, second grade, third grade and, you know, walking that through into our health and mental, mental, our health and wellness center. Because everything's impacting our children, if they have food anxiety, if they're not showing up on social media, if they can't attend events that aren't welcoming. So I think it's really looking at all of the aspects of how we are engaging with students. And sometimes we think it's only in high school and it's way before that. So, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Fay.
Yes. So addressing teen suicide, I think the school and the superintendent and the administration are well on their way with wisely using the Fair's Act and, and American Recovery Act money to put counselors in the school. It actually relates back to the previous question, which is to catch the situation early and to have methods of recognizing it with the counselors, but also the wellness centers in a place where kids can come and feel a part of the situation, a part of their school. So I also think that an issue that relates to this is a safety issue is cyberbullying and bullying in general. And that again is something that we can talk about at school with the kids and develop a culture with them that, that's not acceptable behavior, you know, and treat each person as you would like to be treated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lucia.
Yes, a lot of great answers here, especially my colleague at the board. So definitely the, the mental health is a priority for our schools at the moment. Um, as has been mentioned before, uh, many of the COVID dollars uh must be invested, I believe, in some of these resources from mental health throughout um their student life. But something else that I would like to add is that schools, um, on their own, we really cannot do this alone. And one of the things that I have been doing throughout my career is building partnerships with other organizations that have also worked on mental health for teens and for our young children. And I think one of the things that I can bring to the table is really trying to push administration and superintendent to strengthen those relationships and partnerships, because in community, we are going to be able to solve this issue or at least support students who are having a hard time. Thank you.
Thank you. Bonnie, is it okay if I answer a question that's in chat or ask?
Um, answer it. I saw that there was a question in the chat. I thought it was for the uh, for the candidate.
I meant to ask if I could ask it?
Yeah, absolutely. Yes, I was gonna encourage you.
So there's a question in chat. I'd like to hear the candidates' views on the selection of resources used to support curriculum, and is there any room for restrictions such as book banning? Um, Bonnie, you call the, call the names of the candidates?
Oh, is Carolina still with us? Yes, let's, okay.
It's my turn. Okay, great. So, you know, as someone that is BIPOC and bilingual, I think it is our duty to really look as a school board and as teachers and as leaders that we are having the curriculum that really lifts up the voices of our students in our classroom. So I'm all about really reimagining, like, I think about the books I read, and I think about where we are in twenty twenty-two. So I think it is, it is powerful. It's powerful to have our students, like, bring books forward, and also, we actually have a process at the district that reimagines the books in our ethic studies. And I think that's powerful to, like, really imagine what the book looks like, how it's being rolled out, and lift the voices of BIPOC community members and show them that they can be leaders and that there is a pathway to success, and we all look very different, and we can all achieve that success. Thank you. I saw my timer.
Thank you. And Lucia, next.
Uh, for sure. And I am, I, there's professionals in the school districts who actually look into curriculum, draft curriculums, and look at the list of books. And I think as a board trustee, we really have to trust in our teachers and our administration to make those election. I have no intention, as a candidate and currently as a trustee, to work on any book banning, quite frankly. Um, and if you and anybody has the time to do that, well, I don't know where they're putting time to actually look after the students. Um, this will be a quite complicated endeavor, quite frankly, and anti-democratic, in my opinion. As an attorney who also believes in freedom of speech, this will be a very difficult thing for me to swallow. So I believe that really what we have to do is trust on teachers and people that really know about education, and also, as my trustee um colleague said, we really also have to lean on our students and the type of content that they want to see and let them advocate with their teachers and administration. Thank you.
Thank you. And Faye?
Yes, thank you for the question. Uh, the um, one thing we do have is a, a fellow to counsel, uh, group related to the schools and made up of teachers. I, I believe it has some community volunteers and even perhaps some students on it that review and look at the, the books and the, the tech, not, not necessarily textbooks, but the books for the reading curriculum. And that's a great way to uh bring books forward, especially for the, the kids from different cultures. Uh, I, I was able to attend Boyd State, and that was one of the issues they brought forward. Why are we reading these books by adult people? We'd like to read some from our, our, our own culture. So uh, we have that vehicle in place, and I think there is a way for citizens to participate in that. Uh, and I, you can get on the website and actually see the, the list of books that are available. Book banning, uh, I don't think that's a piece of our culture in this country.
Thank you. Bonnie, I think we have time for one more question for the school board candidates.
Oh, I hope we have more, time for more than one. I've, I've, I've got like three for sure, and we've got so many here. Um, so um, if Carolina is still here, I wanted to just get through a few of these. Great. Uh, during the pandemic, um, do you believe the school board took appropriate precautions with regard to vaccines and school shutdowns? If not, why not?
Me again? I'm going first again.
Okay, yeah, okay. I'm gonna keep mixing it up.
I feel like it's me again. Okay, um, so I think the, first of all, if I remember the correction correctly, I think our school board and our schools did an amazing job to bring, I mean, I taught kindergarten in this room that I'm in right now. So I think the school board and the school did an amazing job to try their best to bring our kids back to our classrooms in a safe, in, in a safe way for our teachers and our students. And I think that our school did a great job of listening to science and what, what was, what was health saying about the vaccinations? And I think I'm very proud of how our school board and school administrators and teachers handled all of it. And I'm very thankful that our children were back sooner than many people in the state of California. Thank you.
Uh, Faye?
Yes, um, the uh schools, and I think this was the correct decision on the part of our superintendent, uh, followed the guidelines and actually uh the instructions of our Marin County uh Human Health Services uh Director. And that is an appropriate way to handle that, because the school board is not going to, is not in a position to make a decision about how that we are going to handle uh directives from Health and Human Services. Uh, they, they chose to follow the directives, and then were very successful and very innovative in bringing forward and finding ways to be the first to get the kids back in those classrooms. And I think that was an appropriate approach.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Lucia?
Well, first of all, Faye, I think you're, you're running, so I'm glad that you think that the board did a, a good job as much as possible. So thank you for that. Uh, so I, I have to say that, um, of course, and hence I, there's some things that we could have done differently. I think there were a lot of challenges around scheduling and things of that nature that frustrated a lot of parents, and I think we have to recognize that. Um, we, um, the school board in particular, and I joined the school board, one of the reasons that pushed me to, to join the school board at the time when I was appointed, was actually to try to push for school opening as much as possible. Um, as much as it was safe for teachers, for students, and for obviously the staff. So I think that obviously there were some hiccups, but we were really trying, and the board was really trying, even before I joined the board, was really to work with public education, with public health. And I think um that was the right thing to do at the time, and as my colleague Carolina mentioned, I am, I am proud that we were one of the first counties and the first students, the first schools to open up. So, thank you.
Great, thank you. Um, I'd like to ask, um, let's start with Carol, with Lucia this time. And um, I'd like to ask you, oh my gosh, um, what uh, what are the rates of high school graduates in Marin that are uh prepared uh with the A through G requirements, so that our students are prepared to enter college? And second part to this, what systems do you propose to increase the rates for our students from diverse backgrounds to be prepared for college?
I, I, am I first? Sorry, but because I have audio issues. Okay, thank you. So yes, well, our graduation rate really depends on a lot of things of the, this, how disproportionate it is.
Sound problem? I'm not hearing you. So I asked that, um, what, why don't we go to um Faye on this, and then we'll come back to you?
Okay, yes, the rates of uh high school graduate in um, in Marin or in our San Rafael City Schools, um, I don't have the specific uh rates, but I do know that we are
I'm not hearing Faye, is it?
Oh.
I, no, we can hear. Is my problem? Yeah, go ahead, Faye.
Okay, so, but I do know that we are uh making efforts to get the, the kids in the high school lined up on curriculum, the A to G curriculum, which is the UC curriculum that allows them uh and gets them the classes so that they are properly positioned if they want to take that path. And that is taking our academic counselors and help to those students to get them in a better position for the path they want to take, either uh into uh, or into graduating and going to uh higher education, or they may choose the Pathways of Praise, which we have a wonderful praise program and the Pathways Program with about twelve uh at least uh paths and things they can, they can investigate, so.
Thank you. Thank you. And then Lucia, do you want to try it again?
Yeah, my, my apologies for that.
Go ahead, Lucia.
No, no worries. So thank you very much for that question. That is actually one of the reasons why I also joined the board. So definitely, there are disproportionate uh graduation rates, especially among Latino and Black students and white students in, in San Rafael. Um, it's quite alarming that about seventy percent of Latinos actually do not graduate with the A to G requirements to attend uh UC, University of California system. Um, this is quite concerning, but at the same time, one of the things that we're trying to do as a district is to uh look at two things. We have an equity audit that looked at this issue, and we have the Together Twenty Twenty Four, which is our strategic plan. And one of the goals that we have is to increase the graduation rates for Black and Latino students. And one of the problems that we have
Oh, it sounds like she's having audio issues, Bonnie. Um, do we want to go with one more question before we turn to the council?
I, yes, if we can, um, yeah.
I left for a second, came back. My apologies for that.
Uh, you just have about twenty seconds left. Go ahead.
Yes, sorry. So one of the things is that we are looking at the data right now to understand how can, first of all, what interventions we have to do with English learners that actually have uninterrupted education, and what kind of interventions we have to have, especially with children who went to school here in the elementary and do not have the ability or don't know anything about A through G requirements. So education interventions and follow our Twenty Together Twenty Twenty Four Plan, who has a lot of interventions and um strategic uh ideas in place. Thank you.
Thank you.
I did see another question in the chat, and that has to do um with trafficking. And I think there was another question about that anyway, so if we could have the candidates talk about uh trafficking. What, uh, the, the chat question was about scientific data that Marin, the uh, is there, is there scientific data that makes Marin such a hub for trafficking? And um, if uh, if so, what is the board doing about that? Uh, let's start with
Start with Faye.
Faye?
Yes, um, the, um, the known factors of trafficking in Marin County were actually uh brought forward in the Marin County Civil Grand Jury Report uh on human trafficking in twenty sixteen. We have a very active and well-formed community group called the Marin Coalition Against Human Trafficking. And I would refer you to that site as a resource for what is happening. The uh, most recently, on just as an example, the uh, there was a story in mid-September about a major uh trafficking, colored bus, five felons were picked up trafficking our juveniles. So I, I give those as examples, where to find the information, and, and that it actually is recently happening here in Marin County. The reason we are a hub is because we, of, of the um, uh, the way that the highways pass through here, we have easy access to move people north to south and east to west.
Thank you. All right, Bonnie? Bonnie?
Yeah, um, as Faye mentioned, there's uh Marin, there's a local coalition that works to end human trafficking, and it's um a lot, lot of law enforcement and nonprofit organizations are part of that coalition. And we, obviously, as a school um board, we are, we're concerned about this and many other issues, especially affecting our youth. Um, I believe that this is an issue that um, there's a lot of initiatives in the county. We definitely need to do more to avoid this for youth, and I think the best way to do it is by encouraging information, education, and having the right supports for students. Um, I think it is definitely a priority for a lot of law enforcement agencies and organizations doing this work on the ground, and we'll follow their lead, and I think it's important that I follow their lead on their knowledge on this, on this many issues, uh, because it does require a comprehensive and a partner uh approach to really end um human trafficking in Marin County. Thank you very much, and everywhere in the United States. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's time for our closing statements. I think we just have two of the candidates for those closing statements. Uh, let's start with Faye.
Well, I want to thank you, the Neighborhood Federation uh for uh your service uh to our community and in presenting this forum for our neighbors uh in trustee area four. You've given us the ability to explore issues that are a key to the successful education of our children in San Rafael City Schools, and for all of us in this forum and watching. It is about the kids, and we are focused on the kids and our obligation to them uh in, as adults uh in their community, to provide them with the basic academic skills so that they can succeed in their education and move successfully into their future. That has, that discussion has many layers, which we have discussed today. As your school board trustee, I'm committed to my three priorities that I stated, academic achievement, uh, safety, and engagement of our community and our parents and our uh community members in our public schools. It is critical for children's generation that we step up and be involved, and I invite you to join me in that now. I ask you for your vote on November eighth, your ballots, I think we said, arrived in your mailboxes today, and I'm committed to serving our community as trustee for San Rafael City School.
Thank you very much. Lucia?
Yes, thank you so much for inviting me here today. One of the things that I enjoy the most is really to connect with the community and answering the great questions that we had had tonight. I am running, because as I mentioned before, I would like to continue serving um the San Rafael community and family and children. We definitely have a lot of challenges, but one of the things that I believe I bring to the table is my ability to collaborate with others and to continue to have a very strong board that puts children first. I am running, um, also because I'm a mother, I'm a parent, and I believe that our children, our schools, are um the keystones of, of our democracy. And I would like to continue um supporting public education. Um, I also would like to get your support in Area Two, and again, I'm going to mention it for those who were not here before, is that I am, uh, although my candidate uh decided to bow out of the race, uh, she continues to be on the ballot, and I'm hopeful that I can have your vote. It has been an honor of a lifetime to be an immigrant to this country, being elected for office will be really what I believe a lot of us should be doing, which is integrating and really being able to advocate for folks that are um, don't have the same privileges that I do, and I would like to continue doing that work, and I hope I have your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I think Carolina had to leave. She had another uh event that she had to rush off to, and um, I'm glad we got to get as many uh questions answered as we did. We still have a lot more, but we need to uh move on to our other candidates in another race. So um, I'm very pleased that uh we were able to present the school board candidates, and I thank you very much for all the great answers um and your presentations. Um, great to meet all of you, and good luck on your race. And uh, Amy?
Thank you, Bonnie. I'm really, uh, really grateful as well. This is our, our co-sponsored forums are really the highlight of every voter's year, I do believe. Moving on to the city council, um, an equally um, an important part of our city government, we have two districts that are up for election this uh season, and we're going to start with District Three. Um, and let's start with our opening statements. Mary Beth, uh, why don't you go ahead and do your opening statement, and that will be followed by Jonathan's?
There we go. All, all technology working well? Great, great. Uh, thank you for your time um to hold these interviews um tonight. I know it takes a lot of administrative um, uh, get up and go to um, that make them happen. I'm going to talk a little bit about myself, um, about the work that I've done on the city council and about the uh, my visions for the future. So I, I grew up on a working farm in Michigan. I'm first-generation college, and I put myself through law school. My personal values, the seat government being for the common good, because working families and small businesses need dependable government to move us all forward. I raise my family here. Both of my children rode their bikes to Glenwood Elementary, swam with swimmer in, went to Davidson Middle School, and graduated from San Rafael High, where they played on the water polo team and were part of the Physics Academy. They are now both graduate engineers, employed, and fully self-supporting. I am a very proud mom. I'm also very proud of my nine years on the San Rafael City Council, where we have focused on programs and investments that advance our where we have focused on programs and investments that advance our community. One unique example that people lose sometimes, the city of San Rafael is the largest provider of childcare in the city. Because San Rafael has onsite childcare at our elementary schools. These, this onsite service allowed me as a working mom to be able to have my children be at the school site and attend their practices and other things at the school site without be having to come home or, and or worry about how they were going to get transported around. And the city remains committed to this unique relationship with the school district because it helps our working families. And I am certainly one of them. It can take years, though, to accomplish significant infrastructure improvements in our community. For example, just today Congressman Jared Huffman kicked off the canal dredging project led by the U.S. Corps of Engineers. We have been advocating for this dredging project for over ten years. There are three marinas in our district and getting boats, particularly sailboats, in and out of those marinas requires that the canal be dredged. We also have marine-based industry along the, along the canal. And more importantly, the canal runs between our neighborhoods and into the middle of our city and binds us together. When it's silted up and doesn't work, it doesn't work for all of us. And so it takes a long time to get those things done, but I've been committed to them over the nine, the last nine years. One example, that's even more than nine years, the Locklomond Development. This project has been going on for two decades. And still, to this day, we are, we have monthly committee meetings overseeing the, the last stages, hopefully the last stages of development. Please go and check out the kayak launch dock. Absolutely awesome. And it's, there are more and more things that will be constructed there. So very excited about what's done, been done so far. And hopefully going to get that thing across the line here in the next couple of years. Our most important project, though, during the time that I've been on the city council, has been our public safety investment. And when I ran for office in 2013, though, this many years ago, Measure E was the funding mechanism that we put in place to fund the, the new state-of-the-art combined public safety center in San Rafael. I hope you've all seen it on Fifth Street. It's absolutely awesome. We have just a state-of-the-art police and fire, all in one place, emergency services operation. Just a, a, a true treasure. And it's coming out into our own community with, with Phase Two in Fire Station 55. Amy, but I have so many more things to talk about.
Thank you so much. Jonathan? Jonathan?
Yeah, I'm here. Thank you. Where's the, there's the clock. Oh, there we is, at the bottom.
Want to look for Jim Draper?
Got him. Great. Thank you very much.
Before you start, Jonathan, just want to remind people, as you have questions, please enter them into chat so that when we have our Q and A, the candidates have a chance to reply to your questions. Okay, Jonathan, go ahead.
That didn't get transcribed, so I don't understand what you said. I'm sorry.
This minute now. One second. Go ahead. I just reminded.
Amy was telling people to put questions in the chat, Jonathan.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. Great. I don't help a lot. The transcription is the best in the world. And some kids, it's kind of hilarious, but unfortunately it could be misleading. But anyway, I'll start. Thanks so much again for this invite. The first thing I want to mention that is that I moved to San Rafael twenty-eight years ago to be near law school. And I was going down to San Francisco, the New College School of Law. And after I graduated, I became very interested in being active and, because I didn't go for the bar. And I actually helped start the San Pedro Road Coalition. I'm one of the original co-founders. And we did for the reason of trying to approach and deal with the quarry. Since then, I've been on the board of and president of the Board of Directors of the Marin Center for Independent Living, which helps people with disabilities. I worked with the Homeless Advocacy Project. And to find how my clients were doing, I actually went down to LA and went homeless for a few days to find out something about the experience that they, that they face. Let's see, you're here. Okay. At one point, I was the treasurer of the San Rafael Assistance Improvement District. A wonderful accomplishment is that I am on the Board of Directors of the former Marin Youth Court. And I took them independent and I'm on their board, the president of the board right now, and they're called Youth Transforming, Truth Transforming Justice. I helped start a legal clinic for patrons of the law library who are self-represented. And when Marin Clean Energy was trying to get started, I was asked to help them raise money. And I brought in about a million and a half dollars for them, which was not used, but I did raise it for them. Subsequent to that, I was on the Marin City Health and Wellness Center and helped them get FQHC and then became a board member of the Ritter Center. And started a lot of work with the homeless and started a group called the Thursday Morning Group, which appreciates something called the Hot Team and has since then housed over five hundred homeless folks. I also started the San Rafael Fire Foundation, and which raises money for the fire department where their city's budget ends. And we bought them needed equipment and they now have a patrol boat that's headquartered over, moored over at the Locklomond yacht there. And other activities is that I've been a football coach off and on for over San Rafael High School and the university. And now I spend most of my time as the Executive Director of Inspirit, which raises funds for people with quadriplegia who need more hours than the two hundred eighty-three they get from the county. I'm not paid in that. I have enough independent income that I'm able to devote my time, which is why I decided to run for the city council because I care very much about my, my community. Our platform would encode wildfire prevention, police reform, a community policing. And I'll open an door and be very energetic and reaching out to people throughout the East District here. And I really want to concentrate on smart growth and public participation in that. And I've been endorsed, endorsed by Sierra Club, Marin firefighters, just as Mary Beth Bushy has, and the county people have endorsed me as well.
Thank you very much. Do you want to do the slideshow again, Jim? So we're going to go ahead and listen to, let me just ask if Gerard Herndon is present. Go ahead and unmute yourself if you are. Is Gerard Herndon present? Okay, hearing no reply, I'm going to skip ahead to Eli Hill, who's currently serving on the city council from District Two. Okay, thanks for closing up the slideshow. Go ahead, Eli.
Great. Thank you all for having me here today to participate in the candidate forum. Thank you to the Federation of San Rafael Neighborhoods and the Point San Pedro Road Coalition. We are all so fortunate to live here in Marin and specifically in San Rafael. My partner Siobhan and I moved to San Rafael because we wanted to live and raise our family in a thriving community. From the water of the bay to the tree-filled hillsides, the city is a microcosm of the region's beauty and opportunity, but also a microcosm of our collective challenges. What started my journey into public service was observing how the city of San Rafael had strategically approached the threat of wildfire. Over the course of decades, the city worked through Measure E to fund our public safety infrastructure and more recently Measure C to create our Marin Wildfire Protection Agency, as well as the San Rafael Wildfire Prevention and Protection Action Plan. I sought appointment to the San Rafael Fire Commission and continued to see how the city approached other community priorities. I was struck by how the vision and strategy of the city was translated into action. I went on to serve on the Planning Commission to help navigate how we manage our development and land use, as well as the opportunity to shape the General Plan 2040. I joined the council in January of 2021 to serve the remainder of then-council member Kate Collins' term as she was elected the first female mayor of San Rafael. I was born and raised in San Francisco. I have a multiracial background that includes Chinese-American heritage through Chinatown at the turn of the century, nineteenth century, and as well as heritage from Germany and Scotland through the Pacific Northwest and Canada. I went through the public school system in San Francisco and then high school in New Hampshire. I'm a graduate of University of California, Berkeley with Bachelor of Science in Nuclear Engineering. My career is focused on strategy and technology consulting with a focus on public sector customers across federal, state, and local entities. Major topics and priorities for me in San Rafael, especially in District Two, as well as the region, continue to be housing and homelessness, racial equity and racial justice, economic recovery and vitality, climate change and sustainability, water supply and demand, public safety, and wildfire mitigation. I am proud to have been a part of adopting our General Plan 2040, which includes our downtown precise plan with Form-based code. I am proud that we adopted a climate emergency declaration. I'm proud that we have allocated 2.6 million from the San Rafael Affordable Housing Trust Fund for three affordable developments at 190 Mill, 331, 3301 Kerner, and 999 Third. I'm proud that we've approved a three-year pilot program of an alternate response team to serve as first, to serve first, as first response for a variety of requests for service, including to those in crisis. I'm proud that we've allocated 20 million in funding for the Third Street Rehabilitation Project right here in District Two. As I've been engaged in the community and worked with regional stakeholders, it's become very clear how and why local government plays an important and essential role for our residents. Local government is the most up-close and personal that government interfaces. In the role of San Rafael Council Member, I have worked with other elected leaders and organizations across Marin to navigate our challenges together. I believe it is this type of collaboration that is most opportunity for impact for community members. I'm endorsed by the, by the Marin Democratic Party, Sierra Club, San Rafael Chamber of Commerce, North Bay Labor Council, Marin Women's PAC, the other council members, including Mayor Kate, Vice Mayor Kurtz, Council Member Bushy, and Council Member Yoren Galati. My campaign website is EliforSanRafael.com. Thank you for the opportunity for me to be here and I look forward to your questions.
Thank you. And one last call. Is Gerard Herndon here? All right. At this point in time, I'm looking in chat, Bonnie, and I do not see any questions unless I've.
I have plenty that were submitted in advance, so we have lots of questions to ask of the candidate. So why don't we just get started?
Okay, you go ahead.
All right. Thank you. Let's start with Mary Beth. And the first question is, many residents believe there is often little opportunity to provide input into city projects or programs before the project or program is up for approval at the city council. What are your plans to improve this situation?
I'm, I, I think that the root cause there is that feeling that they're not part of the, or that there's no opportunity. And we have every kind of possible outreach that, that we can through all, all, all different forms of media. And our projects are, particularly large infrastructure projects, have extensive outreach. To the extent, I guess I would want to talk to someone who feels that way to help them, to help understand better where, where, where the gaps are. And we are, we have completely revamped our, you know, community outreach. You all may have received a postcard about our, our, our community meetings that we're doing quarterly. And we're trying to use different ways to, to get to people, not just going through the established structures like the HOAs and things like that, but going directly to where people are. But we're, we're trying really hard. And if, if we're not hitting, hitting the mark, I would, I would like to hear in, in what way.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jonathan?
Okay. I think that being a councilperson is almost like running a campaign. I think personal outreach is a really good idea. And it, I think that we have, I will be out into the community. It's, it's one of the things that I talked about in my platform, is, is an open door policy of contacting people, inviting people to different sessions where they might feel that they have some issues to air. If there's that whole thing about, you know, City Hall, does City Hall really listen? And they do, but it's, it can seem like they don't. My point would be to get out there as much as possible, see as many people as possible so that they would feel connected to and feel more open to talking with City Hall.
Thank you.
Thank you. Eli?
Yeah, thank you for the question. I, I do think that that does, that feeling does exist. I want to validate that. I, I will reiterate a couple of things that were said, which is that there are many channels that the city has invested in to make certain that we can take in feedback, whether it's through digital channels or in person at meetings. But perhaps, you know, just an acknowledgement that we can always be doing better. I think that, you know, what, what can exist for, in some community members' minds, as I've engaged with folks, is, hey, by the time I get to the point where I make a comment, it feels like the ordinance or decision is somewhat codified. You know, staff is already incorporated, what they're going to incorporate, community input sometimes doesn't sway. I would just say that I have not made, as, as a representative, hopefully for District Two, that my mind is not made up until every word has been said in the space that I've read, every word that has been submitted. But I, I look forward to hearing more about how it can improve community engagement.
Thank you very much. I, we've received several questions about sea level rise. So I, I think that that's a topic of interest to a number of people. And so let's start with Jonathan on this.
Oh, you're muted, Bonnie.
All right, sorry. The, the city of San Rafael and Highway Thirty-seven are two areas expected to be on the forefront of areas that will be flooded. One sea level, the sea level has risen by twelve inches. There are areas such as the city of Sausalito and the city of Nevada who have received funding for wetlands restoration and other projects. And for years now, San Rafael neighborhoods in FEMA flood zones have been pleading with the city to start making specific plans to address the sea level rise threat. If you were elected or if you're on the city council, what are you going to do to find money to fund plants and projects to protect our homes, businesses, and our community?
Who would you like to start? Bonnie?
Okay. So there are grants available. And in order to do this, and it's something that the city budget really ought to be, be aware of and, and accomplish and working on. The two areas that I'm most concerned about are near the Marin Yacht Club and just past that in, out where Night Drive is. I've, I've seen both areas get flooded a number of years ago. And if things were to become very difficult, I would want there to be, and I will advocate for escape routes up on the hill. There's no way to get from Glenwood into town on the hill. You got to go on San Pedro Road. And I think that we need to develop those escape routes across those hills through Bayside Acres and through Country Club to get to the town.
Thank you. Mary Beth?
This is a super complex question, and the answer is, is, is equally complex. The, the city of San Rafael acting alone cannot hold back the seas. This has to be a, a, a regional answer to the larger problem of, of sea level rise. And the city is, is participating with the county in a number of different activities on sea level rise on a, on a regional basis. Um, going to the opposite end of the spectrum though, um, the city is very much on the forefront. I mean, literally on the front line of, um, keeping the, the berms and the pumps, um, that keep parts of San Rafael dried right now, never mind when this, when the, when the sea level rises. Um, that is something that the city is absolutely committed to and goes back to infrastructure projects that require a long time to plan and maintain. And that's something that San Rafael has been committed to all along. I mean, you know, our berms are in great shape. But we're gonna, we're, we're gonna do the pump station next week. Okay.
Thank you. Eli.
Hi, I'm, uh, on child care duties. My daughter's in the background. I will answer, um, nevertheless. Uh, so the city has been, um, examining this for, for some time. Thank you. I, I apologize. That's okay. We paused your.
We paused your timer. This is an acceptable reason.
So, you know, clearly in San Rafael, we are, okay, I'll get it. Um, I'm on, uh, lone duty tonight, folks. I apologize. You know, San Rafael has been examining, uh, this for, for some time. Uh, in part of that is to prepare our flood risk and sea level rise adaptation report. That basically gets us into line to make those types of funding requests. The amount of money we're talking about here is not something that the city can generate. This is federal level and state level of dollars that we're looking at. We're talking about hundreds of millions to fund managed retreat, to enhance our infrastructure, including what, uh, council member Bushy mentioned about uh, our pump stations and making certain that those are in place, but also even, uh, mitigation measures like Tuscornia Marsh, which, uh, the planning commission, uh, approved initial funding and approval for that. So all of these are on the table. Uh, essentially what we need to do is make certain that we are creating shovel readiness so that the, we can ask legitimately for these hundreds of millions of dollars, uh, to manage, uh, the mitigations and potentially manage retreat. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, um, I, I, would you, Eli, would you like to be the last to answer the next question? I can.
Yes, just in case there's another interruption, I apologize, folks.
All right, so let's start with Mary Beth on, on this question. Um, the traffic in central San Rafael on second and third, uh, from east to west and west to east is staggeringly slow. What is your solution to, uh, to relieve this problem?
In one minute.
Okay, one, the, it, it, one minute, there, there are two things going on there. One is our great project on, 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 on Third Street. Um, redoing that. When that construction is over, that will, um, that will, um, improve traffic a, a, a great deal. Um, I think we also have to start wondering, um, if it's time to take a hard look at the, uh, smart train running from Central San Rafael to the Larkspur Ferry. Very ridership is down over 90%. Um, I think we should take a look at the ridership, uh, the numbers of people that are going from San Rafael to, to Larkspur and, and look at other ways to possibly transport them as a way of mitigating some of the traffic stalls that occur because of the train.
Thank you. Jonathan.
Well, not that Mary Beth stole my thunder on that, but I really think that, uh, the train is a, um, uh, is a, is a, uh, an issue that needs to be addressed. I was actually in the room a couple of years ago when, uh, reviewed and previewed the, uh, campaign against the, uh, uh, the extension of the sales tax. But the other thing that I'm concerned about is that, um, again, San Pedro Road, we run into, uh, traffic, uh, from the kids leaving school, uh, at different times every day. And, uh, I think to get more public transit and more school buses would be a way of alleviating that because their, their parking lot is packed every day. And, uh, helping folks know when those schools let out would be really a good way to alleviate traffic. But it is a complex issue and, uh, uh, getting rid of that train would be a good idea.
Thank you. Uh, Eli, I'm not sure whether you actually heard this, the question.
I would appreciate the restatement. Thank you.
Okay, um, the traffic in central San Rafael on second and third from east to west and west to east is staggeringly slow. What is your solution to relieve this problem?
Yeah, I believe I heard some comments made about this in the, in the previous statement. So, um, I think there is a notion of suspend disbelief. Uh, we are in the midst of the Third Street Rehabilitation Project. We are enhancing obviously pedestrian infrastructure. There was a sidewalk that was completely missing, uh, in the West End, uh, as well as, uh, bicycle infrastructure. That in place, uh, should provide, uh, some additional relief, but also I think for folks who live here in the West End know that cars go much faster than the speed limit, um, in working with, uh, local, uh, with our San Rafael Police Department, uh, traffic pool. Uh, they have, uh, done a series of enforcements. Um, but with respect to, to throughput, just by math, as, as population continues to increase, uh, even adding more lanes, uh, is not necessarily going to provide the relief. Uh, more and more as we lean into, uh, infrastructure, uh, for public transportation as well as cycling, uh, we will find, I think, a better blend, uh, making certain our east-west as well as north-south, uh, thoroughfares, uh, can provide that throughput. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, the next question is kind of a good follow-up for what we've been discussing. Um, and, uh, let's, let's start with you, Eli, this time. Um, what issues do you see, um, as priorities for consideration as the environmental review of the San Rafael Transit Center project moves forward?
Thank you. Yeah, the, so, uh, this is a, this is a difficult topic because this is actually showing up in our next council meeting, so I have to be very careful to not, uh, jump too far into it. Uh, based on the fact this is an upcoming, uh, item that we're going to be examining. I will say this though, you know, uh, of the alternatives that are there, um, I do think that there are some that I, I would prefer on face value. I do think that as we learn more, uh, about microclimate and what CO2 can do, I think alternative, the alternates that say are too proximate or even under the freeway, uh, would pose, uh, health issues for folks that are there, uh, for extended periods of time. Uh, as well as any issues where we're, um, over, uh, the waterway there. Um, I also think that, uh, there are several recommendations that the city uh, has made with respect to, uh, traffic configuration, with respect to, uh, safety. Uh, but ultimately, uh, if we're able to, uh, uh, continue to enhance public, uh, our public transportation infrastructure, we should be able to take, uh, more individual drivers, uh, off the road. Thank you.
Thank you. And, um, let's go to Mary Beth.
Well, I was a user, a patron of the San Rafael Transit Center for decades, um, so very, um, very familiar with this. Um, however, um, with the pandemic, um, uh, myself, like many people stopped using, um, transit because we don't do the daily commute anymore. And the, the studies, and, and I, I can talk about this because I've already said this publicly, um, to the, um, Golden Gate Transit, um, at, at, at previous hearings, um, the studies on which they are basing their design, um, occurred before, use, uh, transit data from before the pandemic. I think those, those, uh, studies need to be updated with current, um, transit use. Um, it may be that a smaller transit center, um, will work for us and can meet, and, and can meet current needs. Um, and that would, um, make things much less, um, disruptive in that area. And again, back to the train, the reason we started talking about moving the transit center was because there was a train running down the middle of it. If that were to change, then the structure of the transit center could change as well, and the design of the transit center could change, um, as well. That said, it is tired and it could be updated. I.
Thank you. Thank you. Jonathan?
Uh, I could just say what she said and we'd be done, uh, because I agree very much with, uh, with, uh, what you said, Mary Beth. Um, and my question is why, uh, why are we even considering, uh, a move of the transit center if uh, the train is in trouble and is not doing what it is that it was hyped to do, uh, now 14 years ago when we all voted for it. Uh, so that's a question that I have is, um, uh, along the lines of what Eli said, uh, I think it really, if we're gonna do that, you know, keep it from underneath the highway, I thought it was awful that we had the homeless, uh, camp there under that highway. It's, uh, it's just, just a terrible place to be. Uh, but I really think we need to address what that train is doing and, uh, before we actually go ahead and try to revamp the transit center.
Hey, thank you very much. Um, uh, speaking of, um, the transit center and the homeless, um, there was recently media attention on the problems related to how the city and county have treated unhoused people in San Rafael. And there has been widespread media attention with regard to alleged police misconduct and excessive force in San Rafael. Do you think the criticisms are justified? If not, what, what do you think? And how will you ensure that San Rafael does better in the future? Um, let's start with Eli on this.
Uh, Bonnie, those are two huge questions. Separate, can we separate them? If, you know, worth more than 60 seconds each.
Okay, okay, let's, let's start the homeless issue and then we'll go on to the police misconduct issue. But it's, it's a media question really, uh, which addresses both. So, so from the media and, uh, perspective.
Yes, no, thank you. I will hone it in on media, uh, and intersect it with the service support area. So, you know, media is something we don't control. Um, media is driven, uh, in many ways by its own need to make certain that it creates, uh, I've, uh, attention on eyeballs, as we all know, um, media needs to do that. That said, you know, just to talk a little bit about the service support area. Um, there, the service support area was, was absolutely needed at the time. We had a series of constraints, uh, we're unable to, uh, provide and get location, making certain that we could provide, you know, case management, making certain we could place folks. As much as the media has focused, uh, on folks that were not placed, you know, specifically in our article that came out from The New Yorker, uh, you know, many, many, many more folks, uh, than that were remaining were actually placed into permanent supportive housing with wraparound services. Uh, it was not perfect. We had very little time and the city, I think, acted boldly, uh, with support from Senator McGuire, working with Caltrans. Uh, we did not get as much support as we would have liked from the county. Uh, but again, we don't control the media, uh, but we continue to have to forge forward. Thank you.
Bonnie, you're muted.
Thank you. Uh, Mary Beth?
Oh, I could go on for a long time. Um, I agree with everything, um, Eli said. Um, although I would suggest that the media should focus on the entities that were not there rather than San Rafael who was there. Um, as you, you may recall, the reason the service support area was, was constructed was because, um, homeless people moved into those parking lots because no one was taking the, the transit anymore, um, in the early days of the pandemic. The owner of the property, Caltrans, refused to, to take any actions whatsoever to control the property or control access to it or, or do anything to, um, to mitigate the impact that those people were having on our businesses and our residents. Similarly, the agency in Marin County that's responsible for Health and Human Services, the County Health and Human Services Department, was not willing to take any actions at, at, at all. I would like the media to investigate tho- the role of those two entities, the landowner and the agency that's responsible for those services. In that void confronted with the need to do something for our, our, our people in San Rafael, our mayor stepped up as did, uh, as did the state senator and created a program.
Thank you very much. Jonathan?
Yes, um, you know, the, the homeless are not a political football, uh, they're people who are suffering. And I saw that in LA when I was there, it was just, you know, it's horrifying for what they go through and, and how they have to fend for themselves. That's the visible homeless, by the way. And it's a very different group than invisible homeless and it's hard to know the numbers of the invisible. Um, but it's not a political football in the sense that we should say somebody else should do it. Uh, I think that the city should, uh, step up and if, if elected, I would be stepping up and cooperating with the county as much as possible in two respects. And one is, uh, helping them in terms of their suffering, seeing what they need. And also, uh, housing, uh, generating as much housing as you possibly can. That is, that is what called the wraparound or housing first, so that the folks who have, who have been living outside have a chance to get back into a home and, uh, gain as much self-esteem as they possibly can.
Now Bonnie, we just have five minutes until the end of our, um, of our time together. Um, could we move to closing statements?
You're, yeah, I, I, wow, went so fast. We have so many questions. Yeah, so, um, sure, uh, let's, let's move on to closing statements and, uh, and should we do it in the reverse order that we, uh, we took the opening statements? That would be starting with you. Or do you have a.
Jim, do you want to put the slideshow back on?
However you want to proceed. I'll turn it back to you, Amy.
Thank you, Bonnie. Um, so what we're going to do at this point in time is we're going to have, uh, closing statements and, and again, thank you all of you for your questions and sorry if we couldn't answer your questions in the time allotted. Um, at this point in time, do you want to go back to the list of candidates? Uh, I want to make sure that Gerard, uh, Herndon is not present. Is that correct? All right, um, let's start with, um, Eli Hill. Would you make your two minute closing statement, please?
Sure, thank you. And thank you everyone for the opportunity to, um, address, uh, folks in our, in our community. I am running for San Rafael District, San Rafael City Council in District Two. There is much at stake for our community. As we continue to navigate our way through, uh, the emergence of, from the pandemic, our shifting demographics, the continued threat of wildfire, climate change, uh, continued journey towards making certain the way of water certainty, uh, continue to work through housing constraints, among many other issues that we need to navigate. There must be continued focus on making certain that we're ushering a future that is balanced against budget, that we are continuing to work with our stakeholders at the state and local level, uh, as well as at the federal level. I will say this, um, the state continues to legislate monolithically, applying laws, uh, across the entire state that, that don't necessarily fit our community. I will continue to work with our state and federal representatives to make certain that we right-size legislation. Uh, specifically, I do think that, um, housing is something that's important. Um, however, uh, building dangerously into our hillsides, especially that is something in District Two that I'm focused on, how we can uh, move more towards cleanup bills that, uh, do not, uh, make fire, um, fire risk increased. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to be here. Um, and I look forward, uh, to the opportunity, uh, to represent again, should, uh, you decide to vote me in. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and then I think it's Jonathan Freeman who is next on the list. I'd like, uh, Jonathan to make your two minute closing statement. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, I, I noticed that in, uh, none of the fora on which I participated, um, was there a question about the canal? And, uh, the reason I bring that up is because, uh, the, the canal houses about, uh, uh, close to 20% of the population of San Rafael and a great number of people come into our east San Rafael area to work uh, for a variety of different reasons. It's a very difficult area, uh, to, um, uh, to work with. It's quite complex. Um, but I will say that, uh, people vote because they feel that someone's gonna be open to this. A feeling. It's almost like you're, it's what you, uh, it's what you do in philanthropy is you, you feel what, uh, is good for the people and you want to give your money to it. And so, uh, my involvement with the community across a wide variety of, uh, kinds of experience shows I'm empathetic and with a diverse experiences, I think I can ensure a strong candidacy and a term of office with great wisdom. And, uh, that's what I offer and, uh, that's my story and I'm sticking to it.
Thank you, Jonathan. Um, Mary Beth?
Uh, uh, thank you. Um, for my closing statement, I want to, to talk about what an honor it's been to serve San Rafael and, and focus on two things of my vision for the future, um, because the future is what drives me. Um, the, the, the first thing is water in Marin County. I'm on the board of the Central Marin Sanitation Agency. Yes, that's our wastewater treatment plant. Um, and I love it. I think it is a source of water, recycled water for our future. And we are taking steps, the, the, the infrastructure, putting the infrastructure in place to have this reliable source of water that is not dependent on rain. Um, that is a vision I have for, for the future, um, that. And that is a vision I have for, for the future that will make our community better and move us all forward. Another vision, a new library. I'm on the new library committee and part of the foundation. We are progressing through the planning process, looking at alternatives, looking at ways to bring information and technology to our community in a modern way that will, again, help our, our citizens move forward in their careers, in their education, and in their just enjoyment of this lovely community that we have. As, as I said, it's been an honor to serve San Rafael. I would like to serve for, for more years so that I can move forward on these important infrastructure projects for our community. Thank you.
Thank you all. One last call for Gerard Herndon. At this point in time, Jim, why don't you share the last slide? I want to, as Jim is bringing that up, I want to be sure that you know that the Federation and the Coalition could not function without, without our members, without our boards, without our steering committees, without you. And so we encourage all of you to get involved. We want to thank our candidates for having attended and for their very frank answers. And.
One more thing, one more thing. I want to encourage everybody to attend our Assembly Candidates Forum that is coming up on the 17th at 6:00 PM.
Right, and so that, that's, we're gonna close with that, but I just want to be sure that with that ballot in hand, right, remember that it, it is your responsibility and your privilege to vote. And I know I'm preaching to the choir here, but you've just heard candidates for two very important areas in our city. And next comes, as Bonnie said, our Assembly Candidates for District 12. So on Monday, the 17th, while there is a conflict with the council meeting, we are really promoting attendance at this event. And we scheduled it so that council members could attend this on a non-council day, and Assembly Member, Candidates could attend next Monday, 6 o'clock. It's a Zoom meeting with this format, and we look forward to seeing many of you there. Please mark it on your calendar, 6 o'clock, and both Bonnie and I will send out reminders. Anything else, Bonnie?
That's it. Thank you so much, Amy, and thanks to all the candidates and attendees, everyone that submitted questions. And thanks, everyone, just for participating.
And to Jim Draper for your help tonight. Bye, everyone. Have a good evening.
Absolutely. Thank you.